Today is Tuesday, May 7th, and this is our regular council meeting. We did not have a closed session item today. We did have a special meeting and I just want to thank everyone who came to that. It was a pretty interesting conversation around a new housing development that will be taking place in Eureka. And with that, we will bring this meeting to order, and I'll begin with the land acknowledgement. The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Ja'ru Gigi. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. I will go ahead and do a roll call to get started.
Mayor Protam Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Molton?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
And Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Here.
Okay, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, there is nothing to report out of closed session since we did not have a closed session meeting, which brings us to mayor's announcements. And my fellow councilmembers will be sharing several proclamations tonight. We're going to start off with Councilmember Contreras Deloche reading the proclamation for the Letter Carriers Food Drive. Is anyone here to receive that proclamation? Oh, awesome. Thank you so much for being here. Fantastic. And you'll have a chance to speak after the proclamation if you would like.
Whereas every year on the second Saturday in May, letter carriers across the country collect non-perishable food as part of the nation's largest one-day food drive, distributing the donations to local food banks such as Food For People, the Food Bank for Humboldt County, and its partner pantries in individual local communities. And whereas since 1993, the Letter Carrier Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive has collected more than 1.9 billion pounds of food nationwide, and in 2023 brought in more than 42 million pounds of food in more than 10,000 cities in all 50 states. And whereas more than 44 million people live in hunger every day in America, including more than 13 million children. And whereas Humboldt County letter carriers collected more than 43 pounds of food from the local community members in 2023, providing critical food resources for Food For People's countywide network of 23 food pantries serving more than 21,000 Humboldt County residents of all ages. And whereas the rising cost of living, including gasoline, housing, utilities, and medical care, is having a serious impact on low-income children, seniors, and families, particularly those living on fixed incomes. And whereas we recognize all the letter carriers for their hard work and their commitment to their communities, and we appreciate community members' support of the food drive, all of the food collected in each community stays in the community. And now therefore, I, Renee Contreras Deloche, on behalf of Mayor Kimbergall and the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim the day of Saturday, May 11th, 2024, as National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive Day, and ask all residents of Eureka for their support by leaving a non-perishable food donation next to their mailbox on the second Saturday in May for their letter carrier to pick up and deliver to local food banks and pantries.
We heard the proclamation. It's coming. We can't talk yet. Thank you. Mayor Protam and honorable councilmembers, I'm David Reed. I'm the Development Director for Food For People, and thank you for this proclamation and for your partnership. We're grateful to all of our partners throughout Humboldt County, our community members, especially our hard-working letter carriers who make this food drive happen. Our carriers out in the community, they work on the front lines. They see our neighbors, seniors, and families who might be struggling. They feel that as they work every day, and their compassion and their generosity makes a big difference to the people that we serve at Food For People. On the Letter Carriers Food Drive Day, which is this Saturday, May 11th, carriers work double duty. They do their regular job, delivering packages and mail, but they're also collecting donations and are oftentimes working long hours, making sure that those donations get to us at Food For People and to pantries across the county. In Humboldt County, since we started in 1995, letter carriers have collected over 1 million pounds of food, and last year, a record, they brought in more than 43,000 pounds of food from our community members. It's the largest single-countywide food drive that we hold every year, and it's coming at a really crucial time. As you all know, food prices are higher, fuel prices are higher, utility prices are higher. Add to that pandemic relief has gone away, and now it's summer, and kids are going to be out of school. Parents are facing extra hungry mouths who don't have school breakfast or lunches necessarily, and this is a time when our pantries get stretched thin. It's also a time when our pantries have used up all the food that was collected by our community during the holidays. And it's a big community to serve. We have about 21,000 people in Humboldt County that we're helping every single month, and that's about 30% higher than it was at the beginning of the pandemic. There's 24 food pantries throughout the county, and food that is collected during this Letter Carrier's Food Drive stays in the community where it's collected. So food that comes into Eureka stays in Eureka. Food that comes in in Blue Lake stays in Blue Lake. Last year, we distributed more than 2.4 million pounds of food throughout the county. If you're interested, which I know you are, you've got a blue bag in your mailbox today. I went home and double-checked. Mine was there. The food that we need: protein items, nut butters, canned meats, chilies, soups, stews, fruit in juice if you can, and canned vegetables. And we ask that folks do not donate things in glass because they inevitably get crushed and broken, and please no expired food. Thank you for your support, and thank you to the community for making this hopefully another record Letter Carrier's Food Drive. We have a representative from Letter Carriers Union. John?
Hello. Good evening, everybody. My name is John Hufansha. I am the Vice President of our local branch for the National Association of Letter Carriers. I was also previously the mail carrier for Food For People before the new building came up. Personally, I'd like to thank the community members, everybody who's donated in the past because it's crucial, like he said, for particularly those of the young ones that are hungry every day. I mean, outside of what he's already said, which I can't really top, it's a, I want to thank everybody ahead of time for the donations that we're about to receive because it really means a big deal to, you know, people in Eureka that need this food because it's definitely, you know, a lifeline that people rely on. I see it every day. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, John.
Thank you. Okay, and next, our next proclamation is for Bike Month, and Councilmember Molton will share that with us.
Hello. Is there anyone here to receive this proclamation for Bike Month? Awesome. I can tell the cyclist in the room wearing your rearview mirror. A City of Eureka proclamation in recognition of Bike Month Humboldt, May 2024. Whereas bicycle travel is an effective means to improve air quality, reduce traffic congestion and noise, reduce energy consumption, increase physical activity, and improve public health. And whereas bicycle commuting benefits both employees and employers through better employee health and fitness, reduced costs for commuting and auto parking, and increased employees' well-being. And whereas the city of Eureka has completed the Eureka Waterfront Trail and Elk River Extension, and recently the North-South Multimodal Corridor Project, creating buffered bike lanes on H&amp;I streets, which will continue to stimulate increased bicycle and other non-motorized use in the city. And whereas the city of Eureka actively seeks to improve the safety and connectivity of its bicycle network by planning for the Bay to Zoo Trail, completing the Eureka Bike Plan, and implementing the city's Complete Street Policy. And whereas the League of American Bicyclists has designated the city of Eureka as a bicycle-friendly community at the bronze level because the city exhibits sustained commitment to cycling. And whereas the League of American Bicyclists has designated May as Bike Month nationally. And whereas the Bike Month Humboldt Coalition offers many events for bicycle riders of all ages to celebrate bicycling in the Humboldt Bay Area in May 2024, such as signing up for the Love to Ride Bike Challenge or attending the family-friendly bicycle celebration at the Jefferson Community Center on Saturday, May 18th. Now therefore, I, Katie Molton, on behalf of Mayor Kimbergall and the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Bike Month Humboldt in the city, proclaim May 23rd, 2024 as Bike to Work Day in the city, invites all citizens to support and participate in these and other activities to contribute to the health of the community and the environment. For details, see BikeMonthHumboldt.org, and urges businesses to provide bike parking and other provisions to support bicycle use in the city, and encourages its residents and visitors to ride safely when bicycling in the city, and for motorists to be safe and respectful of cyclists sharing the roads of the city, and encourages residents to ride a bicycle to meet as many of their transportation needs as possible.
So I'm Molly Martian. I'm a volunteer with Bike Month Humboldt, Bike Party Humboldt, Bike Kitchen, and I love living in this bike-friendly community, being able to ride to events and not have to look for parking, getting to ride to my shopping and errands, enjoying bay views and getting a little exercise. So I just want to say thank you to all of our very dedicated city employees, public servants, and volunteers who have worked so hard to make Eureka a wonderful place to commute and recreate by bicycle. Thank you.
And Councilmember Fernandez will read Older Americans Month proclamation. I believe Maggie Kraft is here. Thanks, Maggie.
All right, so we have City of Eureka proclamation in recognition of Older Americans Month, May 2024. Whereas May is Older Americans Month, a time for us to recognize and honor older adults. And whereas through their wealth of life experience and wisdom, older adults guide our younger generations and carry forward abundant cultural and historical knowledge. And whereas older Americans improve our communities through intergenerational relationships, community service, civic engagement, and many other activities. And whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently. Now therefore, I, Mario Fernandez, on behalf of Mayor Kimbergall and Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim that the City Council of the City of Eureka recognizes May 2024 to be Older Americans Month. This year's theme, Powered by Connection, emphasizes the profound impact of meaningful interactions and social connection on the well-being and health of older adults in our community, and urges residents to join in promoting programs and activities that foster connection, inclusion, and support for older adults.
Thank you so much. Sorry, my hands are cold. This place is cold. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity, and I want to also thank you because some of what we do together is directly responsible for improving social connections and the health and well-being of people in our community. Our services and your support of those services help keep those older adults connected and healthy. They keep them connected by opening, encouraging people to open their homes for a home share where they can get a little extra money and have company, have somebody in the home that they can interact with and share life with, and our volunteer driver program that gets people to medical appointments and makes friends in the process. We need these community volunteers more than ever. We need drivers. We need homeowners. We need everyone to open their hearts, their cars, and their homes to those who need this help. So I appreciate coming, especially to you today because not only do you support Older Americans Month, but you also understand how supporting the health and well-being of older adults in your community really matters. So I want to thank you for that. Ageism is something that we all still deal with. It continues to negatively impact all of us, and our own ageism works against us in a lot of ways, against our own self-interest. So I always encourage everyone to think about making connections with people of different ages, different groups, and really realize that everybody is on the same journey, and somebody who is older now was younger once. And there's a connection. There's opportunities for connection there that can be really amazing. And we have a couple of programs that really foster that connection, and we hope that more people will take advantage of those and become volunteers to interact with older adults and learn from them and learn from each other. So I want to thank you for that. I know you have this up now. Do you want me to go run through this now, or do you want me to wait? I could hear you.
We're just going to segue right into Maggie's presentation, or the presentation of the Area 1 Agency on Aging for the Volunteer Driver and North Coast Home Share Program. All right, and now we'll pass the mic back over to you.
So this will be quick, but if I know where I'm pointing it, do I point it? Point it at, oh, maybe I'm not. Okay, let's try this. Ah, there we go. So this is our volunteer driver program. Some, just some data about who we're serving and active clients. 756 people are signed up. That means at any time, any one of those people could call for a ride. Luckily, they don't all call at once. Our average client age is 75, and 47% of the people we're serving in this program are Eureka residents. We only have 20 active volunteers right now. Are we, it's been challenging to get the numbers back up since COVID. People are still just not, not out volunteering as much as we'd like to see that. The average age of our volunteer is 62, also lower than it was before COVID. But look at what these 20 volunteers have managed to do in one, in a 12-month period: 962 hours, 16,000-plus miles, and 890 rides. That's round-trip rides. We never take somebody and not bring them back. It's bad for business. So our home share program, we've really been doing a lot this year. Our first match was right before COVID started, and since that time, we've done a total of 58 matches. Last year, we did 15, and we have 13 that are ongoing. Our longest match was over three years or will be three years. It's over three years by six days today, but the average match is just under a year. And this is some data about the ages of the folks we're matching. We really do target older adults. We would certainly support matching a younger adult, but most of the people who come to us are older adults, and you'll see why in a minute. Mostly females, our oldest client, 92, youngest there 31, and 55% of them live in Eureka. This is the average rent, and this is the average income that most of the guests that we're serving have in a year. So that money won't get them a house, won't get them an apartment on their own. It, that is not enough to live in this community by any stretch. So the rent that they're paying is appreciably lower than it would be if they tried to get their own housing, and they just can't. We've been doing direct mailing outreach thanks to your support, and we've had, we have a meet-and-greet. I should, I do not want to fail to mention, it is next week on Wednesday at the library. I believe it's at 1 o'clock-ish. You could check it out on our website if, I know my staff are in the ethers and they might want to correct me if, if they can be given permission if I have it wrong, but I believe that's when it's happening. What we do is we bring people together to talk about the program, answer their questions, and we've had three meet-and-greets. We've got, well, this will be the fourth, and we target those mailings to Eureka residents and are really getting a good response. You usually have to talk to people about this more than once or three or four times, just like getting people to volunteer, getting people to do a lot of things. They need to hear it and think about it and talk about it a lot. So these meet-and-greets are opportunities for people to come. They can come to more than one and just kind of wrap their head around what it would be like to open their home to, to somebody else and share that space. We've all done it before. We all grew up that way mostly. We did it, those of us who went to college did it. Many people right now do it because of necessity, and, and it really is, if we, we get the right match put together, it can be really a wonderful circumstance. And we do match people. We background check, we match people, we interview them, we have them meet, we do a trial. We do like a couple-week trial where they can, they can do it and just see how it works before we enter into 30-day notice for eviction and those other things. So it gives people a chance to say, whoa, you know, do I want to wake up in the same house as this person day after day? And, and that, that really helps. You're laughing. That's, sorry about that. That took you somewhere else, and I, yeah. But yes, that's a question we all ask ourselves, I suppose. Anyway, so those are the slides. That's the data. I didn't want to go too much with that, but I did want to share those with you and really thank you for your support. And if there's any questions about those programs, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Thank you, Maggie. And that, you know, that program's really wonderful. It often seems like, you know, there's a lot of people who live in our community that have homes that really are too big for them, you know, for one person, and so it's a great opportunity to really make better use of that space. It's a lot faster than building housing developments to, you know, use these under, you know, what I would think is underutilized homes. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I was just hoping to hear some more of the broad strokes on the home share program, like what it is and how people can get involved with it.
Right. So if people are interested, if you have a home and you have extra room, you call our office, you talk to Julie. She's the coordinator, and she'll take you through a process where you'll fill out an application, tell us about yourself. We do background checks, and we, you know, we think she's a matchmaker. We think we have a good match. We introduce you. You spend some time together. And then if you want to move forward with, you know, with a living arrangement, then we, we help people understand what should be in a rental agreement and what their rights are and things like that, and encourage people to solve problems. You know, communication's good, all the things that we all were supposed to have learned when we were younger. And then we, we set people free and, and see what happens. We do, you know, we're not therapists. We're not, what else would it be? We're not going to...
You're not counselors.
We're not counselors, and we're not going to take sides, but you know, if, if we do, you know, if we need to get in, if we do get in a situation where the match doesn't work and they need assistance, but most matches work or they part, you know, they part congenially. But if not, we, you know, we do provide support.
And when did you say the next Info Day or meetup about this was?
The next what? I'm sorry?
You had said something about...
Well, the meetup is next Wednesday.
There we go.
The 15th. Is that the Wednesday, the 15th?
Yes.
Then it's the Wednesday at the library in that little room they have, or the big room they have there on the side, and I believe it's at 1 o'clock.
Thank you.
Yeah. And you know, what you said, Leslie, is so true. It's like there's so many ways we need to address the housing situation in our communities, all of our communities. This is just a small piece, but while we have those older adults living in homes that they don't want to sell because they don't know where they would go to, or they don't know what to do with their stuff, or just, they just don't want to, this is a way to better maximize the use of that space, absolutely. And, and, and so it's just one piece of the big fat puzzle that has lots of tiny pieces. Anyway, so thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you for all of your work in the community. For our next presentation, we have some special guests. Director Kenyon will introduce them, but I just want to thank, you know, it is a cohort of Cal Poly Humboldt students who are here to present their senior capstone project, and it's a real honor to have you here in council chambers.
Thanks and good evening. Just some background. Professor Lori Richmond, who's also here with us, reached out to the city asking if we wanted to be a client for a senior capstone project for her planning and policy students in the Department of Environmental Science and Management. And the class began in January, and the city was paired with four students, which are going to present the results of their project tonight. And what they're helping us on is background research for our local coastal program update, specifically on changes to how we regulate ground floor uses in Old Town. It's, the way we're currently regulating isn't working, so we're trying to draft new regulations as part of the update, and we're definitely seeing trade-offs between wanting to completely allow any sort of use to prevent vacancies and then also not wanting to end up with just all inactive ground floor uses so that Old Town loses its destination, visitor-serving destination vibe. So one idea that has been floated around is creating a smaller visitor-serving core where the regulations are stricter about active ground floor uses like retail and restaurants, and then liberalizing what's allowed further out from that core in Old Town. And so that was one of the questions that the, the students are explored for us, and they did a bunch of work, including walking around Old Town and inventorying all of the current ground floor uses and vacancies. And I've just been really impressed with all the work they've done and what they've been able to achieve, and I want to congratulate them not just on the project, but also on their pending graduation, which is apparently at Eureka High School. So hopefully we can continue this partnership with Professor, and I'm going to turn it over to the students now, so I'm going to pull up your presentation. I guess I'll just pull it up then. And then you guys, there's a clicker. Do you see it? Do we just press the big button? Good evening. Oh, good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Sarah.
My name is Hannah.
My name is Nick.
And I'm Isamar.
And as Kristin said, we're presenting our senior capstone project for our degree from Cal Poly Humboldt in Environmental Science and Management, Planning, and Policy. So first, we'll take you through a roadmap of our presentation. We'll begin by introducing the purpose of our project and our major objectives, and then we'll give you some relevant background information, and then we'll give you a quick overview of our methodology. Then we'll take you through our findings, and finally, we'll conclude with a discussion about our recommendations to the city of Eureka. The purpose of our project is to support planning goals of the city of Eureka by offering revitalization recommendations for Old Town. We identified planning goals of the city of Eureka to be updating the local coastal program, promoting revitalization, and developing a visitor-serving core. And we have identified a visitor-serving core to be a geographically small area where zoning regulations are restricted to promote pedestrian and visitor activity. And then our major objectives that we set out to complete for this project include a literature review of relevant planning and policy documents to uncover revitalization planning trends and exploring avenues to prevent gentrification from revitalization. We also sought out to hold conversations with community stakeholders to develop an -- determine occupancy rates. And finally, we wanted to develop a set of recommendations and next steps for the City of Eureka to consider, including specific recommendations related to the local coastal program update.
So I will start off by, uh, describing our study area, which is Kristin has already, um, described as the Old Town District, um, which is designated as in the 2040 general plan for Eureka. More specifically, it is between, uh, First and Third Street and from the B Street area over to J Street. And the entirety of this area is within the coastal zone, hence again, the LCP update. Uh, we do want to make a, I do want to make a note that it is important to realize that the Coastal Act gives priority to visitor serving uses over residential and other commercial uses within the coastal zone. And that will take us into the zoning of Old Town. For the most part, the zoning of Old Town is commercial waterfront, which promotes and protects the nearshore development of recreational visitor serving and commercial fishing industry uses. And some of the principal uses of this zoning designation are for hotels and visitor serving developments. And for conditional uses, this includes things such as professional offices and residential uses on upper floors of multi-story structures.
So as part of our methodology for our project, we completed a literature review. We also spent a large portion of our project collecting and disseminating primary data. This included semi-structured interviews with community stakeholders, as well as a group information gathering session that we called a walkabout. We walked through Old Town with local business and building owners. To better understand their opinions and preferences, we also conducted a ground floor occupancy inventory. We surveyed every ground floor unit in Old Town to determine occupancy and use type. To display our information, we developed maps using GIS software, which we will show you in this presentation. So part of our project involved looking at the strategies other cities are utilizing to invigorate their Old Town and downtown areas. Through researching planning documents, we identified common strategies used by these cities, many of which the City of Eureka is already implementing. Through our research, we found that cities are not only loosening zoning restrictions to include flexible uses at the street level, such as conference rooms, lab spaces, and residential building amenities. They are also addressing underutilized spaces by incorporating landscaping elements, street furniture, outdoor patio dining, and elements that help enhance the pedestrian experience. This can be very helpful in areas with low visual interests, such as empty lots and buildings. This, um, cities are also making greater use of their alleyways, making them more attractive to pedestrians and bicyclists. These are just a few of the planning trends we reviewed in our report.
When talking about revitalization and zoning policies, it's really important to also talk about historical context and also how it's going to affect the existing communities. And some of the effects are from, or happen because of gentrification, which is the process where because revitalization occurs or some sort of economic shift, we see more affluent communities displacing people of color and low income. And historically, we've seen in Eureka especially, we've seen the Chinese immigrant exclusion act displace Chinese immigrants. And of course, we know the Wee At people who are displaced. And it's really important to understand these communities and how they have been affected by revitalization. However, there are ways to prevent gentrification. We found in our research that it's really important to have community input and understand how they'll be affected by revitalization and the, how communities want their community to look and like the values that they have. They all, we also found that community-based agreements are really important and, um, understanding the current conditions and how they'll change after revitalization.
So as mentioned earlier, we conducted interviews with local business owners and community members. When asked about ground floor vacancies, the majority of community members felt that vacancy rates were pretty low in the Old Town area. Through these interviews, we learned that community members would like to see a standard of well-maintained buildings throughout Old Town and visually appealing window displays. In addition, they feel that mixed-use development, in particular residential development, is necessary for the revitalization and increased vibrancy of the Old Town area.
So as noted in our methodology, one of the things we did was, uh, taking the ground floor occupancy, um, inventory of Old Town in our study area. Here it has been mapped. Um, I will note that there are 197 addresses that we noticed within this inventory or that we noted in this inventory. The blue, uh, the blue outlines are, um, occupied retail addresses and red is the vacant retail addresses. And this gives us a retail vacancy rate in Old Town of 8.6%, which is below the national average of about 10.3%. We then further split the, we first started with the, um, vacancy rate, whether it was occupied or vacant, and then we moved on and categorized them into 11 broad categories, um, as you can see here. And then the most common categories we saw across the air, um, across Old Town were offices at over 28%, retail at over 27%, and food and beverage serving, uh, almost 19% of the total retail addresses in Old Town. We then took these categories and broadly, um, thought about how they would be underneath, under Eureka's current LCP, of whether they'd be visitor serving or non-visitor serving. And we broke that down into this map here. That gives us a visitor serving rate of 53.3% in, and then a non-visitor serving rate of 46.7. This is more important to realize as whether these are, these businesses would be considered principally permitted or conditionally permitted. With this, this gives us about 47% of, um, businesses in Old Town at one point or another having to get a conditional use permit. So going on into the issues that we saw, um, one of the things that Kristin had brought up was the active inactive ground floor uses, which we broadly categorized as meaning businesses that do not generate foot traffic, like the many of the professional offices that again dominate Old Town. Another issue that we saw was the restrictive zoning code, which again requires, um, conditional use permits and coastal development permits for a lot of businesses to actually be able to get with, get into Old Town. And those permits are costly, time-consuming, and are not guaranteed approval. So, so for our recommendations, uh, one of the things the city wants us to look for was whether the visitor serving core would be appropriate for Eureka and if it was, at what size. However, through our study of the area, we have found that we believe that there should be no, um, visitor serving core. A core is better for, visitor serving core is better it, um, when there's a high vacancy rate to help get more businesses in and fill those buildings. It is not the best for addressing something such as high inactive ground floor uses, such as all of the office space in Old Town. We also recommend that the city updates the zoning code to help remove some of the major barriers. Some of the proposed, um, zoning code changes include removing the need for conditional use permits for upper floor in non-street facing ground floor residences and offices, and base zoning on performance types rather than use types. This would, um, remove, again, remove these major barriers that, um, stop people from getting into Old Town and, um, affecting the vibrancy that Old Town currently has. We also recommend that the city continue to implement design standards for ground floor street-facing windows to help Eureka maintain, or Old Town maintain its active and engaging pedestrian environment. And prioritizing pedestrian family-friendly development to maintain connectivity and encourage visitors to explore all of Old Town and not just one small area.
Throughout our project, we identified next steps that we suggest the City of Eureka take to bolster the information and recommendations that we have presented today. First, we suggest the City of Eureka engage in specific community outreach to gather more opinions and thoughts surrounding the potential regulatory changes, provided there is the capacity to do so. We also suggest that the City of Eureka conduct an upper floor inventory to understand current uses and occupancy rates. This data would provide insight into which uses would be most beneficial to promote. Finally, we believe an in-depth use type analysis should be completed. Specifically, we suggest the City of Eureka look at the number of principally permitted entities against the number of conditionally permitted entities under the current local coastal program and the proposed regulatory changes. To conclude, we would like to thank Kristin Kenyon and the City of Eureka Planning Department for being our community client for our capstone project. We enjoyed working with you and appreciated your support and recommendations throughout the semester. We'd also like to thank our advisor Lori Richmond. We appreciated your guidance throughout the project. Finally, we would like to thank you all for being here tonight and listening to our presentation. And if you'd like to view our entire report, you can scan the QR code with your phone. And we're happy to take any questions. Thanks.
Any questions? Or comments?
Uh, thank you for putting this together. Could staff send that report to us?
We definitely can. And I was going to say, if any of you plan on applying for the Coastal Commission, just give me a call and I'll give you a letter of recommendation.
Uh, one of the recommendations that you had provided at the beginning was loosening zoning restrictions, adding landscape elements. I was wondering what kind of landscape elements you were taking into consideration or what you'd recommend?
Yeah, um, so in the report, there is like a lengthy list of like all the different types of landscape elements that different cities are using. But, um, landscape elements can really include anything, um, anything that kind of beautifies the area to make it more attractive for pedestrians to hang out in. So it really is about just making it feel more attractive to pedestrians. So, and that's coupled with other things, like I mentioned, street furniture and outdoor patio dining, which, you know, could be a combination of working with the businesses as well, so, yeah.
Are, are you, are you maybe hinting at like parklets or something along those lines? Like what we would see out in front of, um, Old Town Coffee and Chocolates at the moment or?
Yeah, yeah, it could be a combination of like just spaces where people can hang out, you know, even like adding more, just where people can stay for longer periods of time. So things that attract people to stay for a long time. So that could be an example of when to, yeah, parklets.
And, and this is definitely one of those things. I could go down the rabbit hole like over the next 15 minutes to 45 minutes with you, but I'll spare the rest of my council colleagues. Uh, but, but I was wondering if you'd taken into consideration how those type of adjustments or recommendations might impact traffic or, uh, vehicle traffic down in the area?
Yeah, I think, um, that's something that needs to be considered when you are kind of planning a complete community and a more pedestrian-oriented area. And that is something that needs to be looked at more closely, but there could be a potential impact, you know, that's, and I think, um, if you're prior, prioritizing pedestrian and bicyclists, then you kind of have to find a happy medium.
And then, uh, this will be the last one. Uh, you, you had referred to, uh, specific community engagement, so I was wondering what type of activities or, uh, engagements you may be talking about there towards the end here?
Right. So, um, you can, you know, yeah.
Um, yeah, we had actually looked at, um, the City of Half Moon Bay and what they were doing in their, um, heritage downtown area. And they had held a lot of community workshops, um, in different locations and at different times to gather community opinions. So we thought that that might be something that could be, um, beneficial. And then when we spoke with Kristin, she had mentioned that a lot of residents of Eureka are often participating. And so when we said specific, we really meant to determine community values around the regulatory changes, rather than more broadly how people feel about Eureka or about Old Town, um, really presenting them with the potential changes and, and seeing what their thoughts and opinions are on that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Maltin.
Uh, hi, and thank you for that. It's a very professional presentation. Um, I'm interested in more of the, the specific strategies around avoiding gentrification or maybe just the, um, the elevator pitch. What sort of baseline principles of development should we be looking towards to avoid having, uh, our working-class families displaced?
Um, the first one that comes to mind is, um, making sure affordable housing is really, um, a big part of that revitalization and making sure that these communities, um, who are low income have that home and have that place to stay. Um, but yeah, as I talked about, having just more, um, involvement with the community is really important and keeping in the values and having more discussions, I think, is kind of the first steps.
Okay, thank you. Keeping the, the people who live here at the table. I appreciate that. And I appreciate you letting us put you through your paces here. Thank you.
Any other council questions or comments?
Uh, I just wanted to say thank you. Um, I appreciated it. Um, we, was it a day or two ago that you sent the attachment? Is there something else or is that the one that I read?
That is the one that you-
Yeah. It, it's just, I appreciate it. It's really extensive and I appreciate the way that you guys have it all laid out and, um, I just, uh, I don't want to jam up our time, but I just, um, yeah, I could probably have a lot of questions as well, but I just, I thought it was really interesting. Thank you for taking the time to do it. It's really well done. Uh, it's put together really well, so, thanks.
Yes, thank you for the allowance for us to be here tonight.
And I just wanted to say, I already used one of their recommendations since I read the report. It became clear, you know, regardless of the use, it's important that they keep something exciting in their windows or have activity in the windows. So, um, we have a, a cyber cafe going to planning commission tomorrow and there's a condition about, uh, keeping the windows transparent and having things in them, um, or having things visible through them. So, um, first attempt, and that was all because of you guys.
Well, I appreciate the brevity of the other council members because now I feel like I get to ask more questions, so thank you. Mayor Protem. Uh, you had, you'd also put in there a piece about community-based agreements. I think I know these as, uh, community benefits agreements. So I was wondering where you looked at, uh, for those or what recommendations you might offer, uh, based on the research you've done?
I cannot remember the specific source, um, but a lot of general plans I looked at had some sort of community-based element and, um, like the workshops and having, um, yeah, those agreements with those community members and residents. Sorry, what was the second part of your question?
Just, like, I guess what would be, what would be the recommendations on those community-based agreements that you would look at?
I really enjoyed our walkabout. I thought that was a really great way, like, looking at how things were gonna, like, like in the future, like, walking about, oh, this is gonna change like this, or this is like, I think, like having something where you can visually see is really important. And also making it way more accessible, I think is great, like, um, because not everyone can maybe, um, and yeah, accessibility is a really big, um, part that was talked about in the community-based agreements that I think would help.
Yeah, and, and I'm really grateful and really appreciative for, for the effort you put into this, especially with the surveying of the, uh, proprietors there in Old Town because, you know, we all have our various ideas here. I'm very much in favor of mixed-use development and so to hear that that's favorable, uh, even though some of what we hear from public comment is not, to know again, that the business owners, the proprietors there in Old Town are, are favorable to it, uh, I'm ve- very glad, very receptive to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, thank you. And we- Thank you. Thank you for your time. Okay, um, thank you. And we do have one more presentation, and this is about the Eureka Kite Festival, or the Kite Festival by Humboldt Kiter's. And Mark Ahrens is here to share with us about that event.
Can't do this alone. There's all kinds of fun to be had. I sent you a, I thought I sent a link to you on email. Oh my goodness. It's okay. I'm kind of up in here about that.
Well, so it sounds like maybe there's a presentation that got lost in the ethers, but maybe Mark, you could go ahead and get started and share with us.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure. Mark Ahrens, I'm with Humboldt Kiter's, and, you know, we've had the Redwood Coast Kite Festival now. How's that? Thanks. It was on and then it went off, and now it's back on. Thank you, sorry. Again, Mark Ahrens with Humboldt Kiter's. We're a Dreammaker Project of Ink People Center for the Arts. And as many know, when the COVID situation hit a few years back, drove a lot of folks indoors. And it changed and disrupted a lot of what people's normal life was. And what spun out of that was the cancellation of the Southern Oregon Kite Festival. And when that went off of the coast area as an activity that people could enjoy, there was a vacancy. And it was, here we go. Thank you. Wonderful. That's populated on its own? How about presentation mode? I'll continue. So I said that, yeah, awesome. Said all that to say this, it provided a wonderful window of opportunity for people to go and rediscover or revisit their childhoods and also make some wonderful things available to other people to live within our community. And with me today is Raymond King. He's a kite enthusiast. He's retired, folks like several of us are. And the idea of Redwood Coast Kite Festival came back to life. In 1997, there was a festival. It lasted for about a year, and this is the reboot, now in the third year. So what started out as let's go fly kites down by the small bridge turned into a first festival and the nonprofit Dreammaker status. Then in the second year, we attracted people at the world-class and international level of competitions to come out with quad kites from John Bressi and Team Kite Life. They came down and had a great time. And this year, we're moving on to some new and exciting stuff. Can I advance this with the, great, thanks? The other again. So when you look at this slide, you'll notice there's a map, and on that map are small kites up and down the west coast. What's going to be happening in two weeks, are there going to be professionals, international competitors coming to Eureka from all of those destinations up and down the west coast? It's going to be a phenomenal experience for everybody who comes out to play. And I mean that seriously, to play. Because it's not just to come show up and go, wow! We're talking about hundreds of types of kites, all shapes, all sizes, single lines, double line duels, duets to music, quad lines, mass ascensions, all sorts of kites. You dreamt about it, you saw it on the internet, you've never seen it in person, odds are pretty good you're going to see it on our coastline. Now, this is a sign so people know how to get around that property down there, okay? We've got the big kites, that's where the giants are going to be. The public field is where children who participate in the Kids' Kite Club are going to be able to fly. Every child deserves to have a great kiting experience. And that was the foundation of Humboldt Kiter's. Every kid needs to have a great experience. So what's going to be provided, again, this year, over 400 kites. A child can come with an accompanied adult, a mom, dad, grandma, grandpa, aunt, uncle, casa worker, social worker, anyone. Say, I'd like to make a kite. If you're three to 12 years old, we go, great, here's a kite. On a plane sale, they get the kite, they can create their own art expression on that kite. If they need assistance, we'll help them put it together. For goodness sakes, with over 400 years of expert kiting experience on the field that weekend, somebody's going to be able to help make that kite fly, right? So they're going to have a great childhood experience, wonderful memories with someone they love, something to remember for a lifetime. So we want to have people know how to get around. So the kind of idea here is there's going to be all kinds of things to see and do. We can move along. Here's some examples of giant kites that flew last year. Next, please. The kids candy drop, we had one each day. That was phenomenal. Giant kites lift up a box of candy into the sky, one, two, three, it's a shower of candy come down at everybody. We do divide it by age group because we are kind of concerned about, you know, no trampling effect. So that's really important. From Spokane, Washington, Mark Giadon's coming down. He's an expert international competitor flyer. He flies quads. All this information, by the way, you can find on Redwood Coast Kite Festival on the Facebook. Raleigh and Letson, they're coming from Albany, Oregon. They're competitive flighters as well. Lindsay, interesting story here. Lindsay is one of four women on an international competitive team, the only competitive women's team in the western hemisphere. Two weeks ago, she and three of her partners were competing in France at the International. They came in fourth place, Team USA. She's going to be one of the people joining us for the festival. Andrew Kramer, retired firefighter up in eastern California. People wonder how in the world does he make this stuff happen? Just a real joy and a pleasure to watch fly. Bill Rodriguez, he's from the Bay Area, San Jose. He's a kite designer, he's a kite creator. He likes to come out and share what he likes to play with. So he's coming up. Locally, Mer last year, she created this photo op spot for us. That'll be up so children can get their photos taken in that. That'll be a neat thing. Locally, Brad and Carolyn Walden, they're international travelers and competitors. They live here in the Eureka area. Brad's on our planning team this year in terms of program and bringing all these pilots together for the celebration in the sky. That's great, good timing, good timing. If you like quads, this is a photo from last year. We had 18 quad pilots, all in a line, all wearing headsets. The man on the far left there, you see is John Bressi, five-time international champion, world champion, I should say. He was here calling the kites. Eight local flyers, the rest of them traveled in, and what a spectacular event that was New this year, Max Puskin, he's from Los Angeles, California. He organizes sport kiting events down in the southern California area. He's dedicated this kite season to traveling the west coast, seeing who's who in the playground and share all the joy and experience that he has. This is an example of a dynamic kite flying when you have a lineup of quad pilots all doing their bliss. We're going to have great food providers. Racks on racks is going to be there, Patino's is going to be there, several others. There are 20 people already signed up for the artisans fair, and that's going to be wonderful expression of all kinds of creative art. It's not a manufactured thing, it's a, I made it, I do it, come see what we do. Again, kite festival's coming up in two weeks. We're always looking for volunteers. You can follow us on Facebook at Redwood Coast Kite Festival, also Humboldt Kiter's. And like I said two years ago, everyone loves kites, right? And if you don't like them now, after you go to the festival, you're going to love kites. Come out and join us.
Thank you so much, Mark. And thanks for your efforts.
If you have any questions?
Right, I'll get there, yeah. Thanks for your efforts to brighten up the skies, and if any councilmembers have questions or comments they want to add, please, Councilmember Maltin?
Not, sorry, not a question, just a comment. Thank you for the presentation. Lovely to see so many people coming down for the festival or coming out for it. And I'm just impressed at the growth of this, turning it into, I guess, from when I first saw it was like, yeah, just some folks flying kites down by the bridge every week and always a pleasant surprise to being this destination. I just really appreciate all the effort that goes in to the backside of that. I understand that these sort of things take a lot of planning and donor solicitation and effort and creativity. So thank you for doing that work for the benefit of kite flyers and for the whole community.
All right, thank you. Thanks.
Councilmember Contreras Deluch?
I just wanted to briefly say thank you. It was delightful last year, so I just thought that it was a lot of fun. I took my four-year-old, yeah, he's almost five now, so he's four. Anyway, it was exciting and we had a really good time watching it, and we got to see that great big giant dragon looking when, so that was just really cool.
Always, the dragon always impresses, and I'm not pre-calling, but I'm trying to encourage. One of our traveling pilots that flies giants has a, what's the name of that big dog that's cartoon dog kind of lumbers around, like? Clifford, yeah, Clifford. There's a kite pilot up the west coast that I think he's going to be here, has a Clifford that's about 60 feet tall, about 100 feet long, and about 20 feet thick. And when he's rigged up and the wind's coming through, right, the body just moves like Clifford's lumbering. Now, that's amazing in itself, right? Then he puts a 20-foot-sized soccer ball in front of Clifford, and the appearance is that Clifford is chasing the ball. Wouldn't that be cool? Thanks, I'm glad you came out.
Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate your time, and we're really looking forward to the festival in a couple of weeks, so, thanks. And hopefully lots of folks watching will get involved. This is, you know, a great event for our city.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. And our next item on the agenda is our public comment period. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Okay, do any members of the public here in council chambers wish to make public comment tonight? Come on up. Okay. Great, glad to have you.
My name is Claudette, and during COVID, I'll just tell you, just a little comic strip I seen during COVID, there was two booths that were set up. One was for the vaccine, and the other one was for salvation. And interesting enough, the one for the vaccine was like a lion out the door, and the one for salvation, it was like three people. It's something that's kind of funny, but really it's not because that's kind of how it is today in our culture. People prefer a temporary fix to a large problem versus salvation. There's a scripture that I want to read to you that is out of the Book of John. It's a story when Jesus fed the 5,000. And this is kind of what that comic strip reminded me of, was this particular story that Jesus had read after he fed the 5,000 people, and they came looking for him again for some more food. "Jesus answered them and said, 'Most assuredly I say to you, you seek me not because you saw the signs, but because you ate of the loaves and were filled. Do not labor for the food which perishes, but for the food which endures everlasting, to everlasting, which the Son of Man will give you, because God the Father has set his seal on him.' Then they said to him, 'What shall we do that we may work the work of God?' Jesus answered and said to them, 'This is the work of God that you believe in him whom he sent.'" Jesus is the cure for COVID, he's the cure for everything, really. But we have to believe it in order for it to work. Acts 4:12 says, "There is salvation in no one else. There is no other name under heaven given among men by which we must be saved." Any outbreaks that happen again, I pray that the line for salvation becomes longer and longer because truly that is the only answer that we have, which is everlasting life. And I just encourage you as well, if you don't have Jesus, get Jesus, because he's the only answer to every issue we have. To God be the glory. Amen.
Thank you, Claudette. It's always good to see you. Any other members of the public here in council chambers wish to make comment? Okay, anyone on Zoom? It looks like we have Shannon Townsend there. Go ahead, Shannon, if you can unmute.
Hi, I just wanted to thank you for putting, hopefully, a ceasefire resolution on a future agenda. I also wanted to thank Councilmember Fernandez for coming to a protest a couple weeks ago. It was nice to see a member of our representatives there, to see what's going on and to see what we're about. And I just wanted to express that, you know, what you've already talked about today, the food drive, housing, the difficulty of housing seniors, even the kite festival, which sounds amazing, all remind me of what we are paying for in Gaza. We are paying for a man-made famine in Gaza. We are paying to see these images of these children with super skinny arms and stomachs who are dying of starvation and lack of water. We are paying for the ongoing bombardment and displacement of our seniors in Gaza. And the one thing that the children could do to still have a little glimpse of a childhood in Rafa on the beach was to fly kites. And now, I'm sure some of you are aware, they are bombing them there now, and I've seen horrible images, I won't describe, of dead children today. I just wanted to bring up that this is important because we do all these great things here for our community, and we're focused on our community, but how can we in the same breath also be sending our tax dollars abroad? I mean, we send roughly 55% of our taxes go to our defense budget, which basically is to terrorize other poor countries, not for American interests, but for special interests, special interests who have donated heavily and continue to donate to our political representatives. So I just wanted to express that, and I want to continue to express that, and I think So I just wanted to express that and I wanna continue to express that and I think we need a grassroots movement here locally and regionally to say no to war and to no to funding all this, this terror in all these other countries, so we can invest more of it in our communities. So thank you for paying attention to this issue, it's on the heart and minds of a lot of us and, um, I do fear that we are going into very dark times and so you guys are a beam of light, just know that, thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Um, DH?
You can have faith in Christ and still go to the doctor. The two are not mutually exclusive. Thank you.
Oh. Okay.
Same joke.
DH, no, because there's all these anti-vax...
I got it.
Okay, thank, thank you, sorry, there's a little muting, unmuting error there, but I think we, we got the, uh, the core message. Um, anyone else on Zoom who wishes to make comment at that, at this time? Okay, uh, we will close public comment and come back to the consent calendar. Um, all matters listed under this category considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted with one motion pursuant to city council res- resolution 2011-22. If a member of the public would like an item on the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, the cr- the request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items. Does anyone wish to pull an item on the consent calendar? Okay.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Okay, um, just gonna keep, uh, zipping through this meeting. Our next item is legislative action and correspondence. Um, this authorizes the mayor or the city manager to assign correspondence on behalf of the city council to support or oppose legislation or administrative rules, uh, proposed or pending action at the county, state, or US government levels. Does anyone wish to bring an item forward at this meeting? Okay, um, we'll move on to, uh, future agenda items. Does anyone have anything they'd like to place on that? Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you. Um, I have, okay, uh, on April 22nd, our EPD officers were called out for a code three to go up to Cal Poly Humboldt and act in mutual aid with other agencies there. Uh, when we got that text, that's when I started watching the live stream, um, and I watched it all the way through till, uh, close to midnight when things were dispersing. And right in the middle, I saw our officers go into an extremely dangerous situation with, with, um, apparently no way out. And I was concerned for the safety of our officers and for the, uh, the folks occupying the building, standing in front of them. And I've asked city manager Slattery to engage our independent police au- auditor to take a look at that situation and they'll be bringing a report to the citizens oversight board, um, in July after they do, um, all the appropriate investigating and interviews and looking at that. So for us, I would like for a future agenda item to have the auditor bring that report to council as well, when it is ready. It's just a report, but I have, you know, to get it on an agenda, make sure everybody wants to hear the report. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to put something on a future agenda? Councilmember Fernandez?
Uh, thank you for putting that forward, Councilmember, uh, Moulton. I, I had a question, uh, I, I know we had done this last year and I believe we are all received an email about, uh, the National Dump the Pump Day again, so is that something we have to agendize or is that something that we can coordinate with, uh, HCTA?
Uh, we can coordinate, um, with them.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
If, oh, yeah, if council... If we get a consensus.
There we go.
Um, I do have one request for a future agenda item and that is to put the, potentially, uh, well, information and potentially a letter of support or the opportunity for a letter of support for the market match program. This program, um, matches funds for folks who receive, uh, foods CalFresh, um, for, for funds that they use at farmers markets. And right now that, uh, program, it's a statewide program, is at risk of losing funding. Um, so just, this would bring information about the program in general as well as, uh, the opportunity for a letter of support. Thank you. Anything else for a future agenda item? Okay, uh, we will move on to the city manager report and I'll s- turn that over to city manager Slattery.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, tonight, we have a report from Humboldt Bay Fire and for that report, it will be on their junior firefighter program that they've established recently and for that report, we have engineer Isola and engineer Powell, whose better half is an employee of the city of Eureka, just so everybody knows.
Good morning, City Council, my name is Yisola, thank you for having me here today.
Good evening, I'm Lyndon Powell.
I'll start off, uh, today, we'll be talking about our junior firefighter program, this will be our newer program that we are just starting up. Um, before, we've had a volunteer program that would capture anyone eighteen or older, but we figured now, um, what do you wanna be when you grow up? What a hard question that we get pondered and hounded with when you're growing up and I figured, uh, talking with chief, this, what a great program to expose youth to what the fire service has to offer and what has found a lot of us a lot of passion and fulfillment. Um, and as well as, uh, not just exposing them to the fire service, but as well as police, um, hospital, and how the city works. Um, so with that, uh, we just wanna mostly it's some, an awareness and in, uh, showing them just our overall operations, um, setting goals if they're wanting to get hired and showing them different, um, hiring avenues such as potentially CalFire or hand crew opportunities and then, um, and not just, uh, letting them know that, you know, the fire service is always gonna be here and that, uh, depending on if they're going to school or other trades that, um, there's, it's never too late to really come back here. Um, minimum requirements we're asking is a 3.0 GPA and if it's lower than that, um, we're willing to work with people, especially if, um, there's making, we're making improvements. Uh, we'd like to see people be sixteen years or older. Um, the commitment, um, just because with, uh, every kid's different with schedules and I just see our coworkers' kids and their schedules and I feel like throwing some hard line schedule would be pretty hard for certain people, so it's gonna be tailored around, uh, the, the kids themselves. So that could be time after class, coming to the firehouse, we have our workouts usually around four o'clock, so that can usually get tied into there as long with some training. Um, and if not, we have our weekends are always open, so it's just trying to, uh, we're trying to streamline this process over into our cadet program because, uh, we have three foundational members that are, worked for our agency for over twenty years each and they were all a part of the Eureka High ROP program. So finding those people that wanna be here, that are born and raised in Humboldt, I think that's what we're looking for. And also just showing people what we do. We wanna be available to our public and as well as the kids and, um, for them to know what we actually do. Uh, I can let, uh, Lyndon talk to you more about our, uh, cadet volunteer program, which is everyone eighteen or older.
Alright, I prepared a little something for the, uh, the cadet program. Um, again, I'm Lyndon Powell, I'm an engineer for Humboldt Bay Fire. Um, the head of the program, Tyler Gillespie, was unable to make it, he had some other engagement he had to go to, so, uh, I'm here to talk about the program on his behalf. Um, becoming a firefighter is hard work, it takes a lot of money and effort. Uh, most people become a firefighter by going through an academy. Uh, a typical academy is four months long, eight hours a day, five days a week, and our nearest accredited academy is in Reading. Uh, these time, distance, and financial requirements make it hard for people in this area to become a firefighter and almost impossible if you have mortgage or rent, a full-time job, and a family to take care of. Uh, the cadet program is a way to get the training required to become a firefighter here locally and on your own schedule. The cadet program is a modification of our volunteer program, uh, where the volunteer program was designed with the end goal to be a volunteer. The cadet program is designed to get people in our community the training and certif- certif- certificates required to be hired by Humboldt Bay Fire. Uh, this process just starts with an application that you can find online or in our main headquarters. Uh, applicants are then chosen through an interview process with a panel of former volunteers like myself, um, who are now part of the floor staff for Humboldt Bay Fire. Uh, these chosen applicants are then put through a background investigation and physicals. Uh, after passing these, the cadet is issued equipment and PPE and begins training with our crews. Uh, these trainings are focused on the goal of becoming a firefighter with Humboldt Bay Fire and is accomplished by completing the Cadet Firefighter Taskbook, Firefighter One Taskbook, the EMT course and its certificate, Firefighter One testing, and the CPAT and FCTC testing, all of these which is paid for by Humboldt Bay Fire. Uh, the cadet program was started last year and we have two cadets who are currently in the program, um, and are finishing up their taskbooks. In April, we held a second round of interviews and from a pool of twenty applications, we got, we're excited to announce, we have seven who have been selected and are currently in backgrounds and are scheduled for physicals in June. Um, our interviews are done once a year and in the, in the spring, um, and we already have a handful of applications for the following year, so they're continually coming in, we kinda ramp up towards the end of the year, we get a whole bunch more, we send out little, uh, media flyers and stuff, but we get applications all throughout the year. Uh, we see this program as an alternative route for people in our community to become firefighter with Humboldt Bay Fire, uh, people who may not be able to become a firefighter otherwise. Uh, we hope to see continued interest in this program and thank you for letting me talk about it. You guys have any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
It's, I think we can do questions and comments, go ahead, Councilmember.
I'm really excited about this, I thought it was really cool, I got to do a ride-along, uh, maybe two weeks ago and this was something that Tyler Gillespie, um, got to talk with me about just a little bit. And, um, I was so excited because one of the things I found out was that a lot of the people in, um, Humboldt Bay Fire had started as volunteers at one time and so I, which I would never have known, um, and I was surprised by that. So I hope that this is gonna be a really great avenue to kind of, that both of these programs will really help, uh, with that recruiting and really building the fire department back up.
Yeah, uh, I can speak a little to that, being a volunteer myself, um, I wouldn't have been able to become a firefighter if there wasn't the volunteer program, which has now merged into the cadet program. It, um, oh, I owned a house, had a full-time job, I had other things going on, I had a kid on the way, I wasn't able to take the six months off or whatever to go out of the area and, uh, and get all the training. So kinda doing this in-house brings a new pool of people to the department that can get that training.
Councilmember Bauer.
Good presentation, um, appreciate that. A couple of questions, how many hours does it take for, is there a, like I said, amount of hours you have to complete to the, to become a firefighter?
So to become a firefighter, um, there's not a set amount of hours other than, there's specific requirements to get your firefighter one, which, um, you can find on the state's website, but, um, specifically for our department to become a firefighter, there's not a set amount of hours that you need to reach, it's more of a set amount of hours you need to, um, be reaching monthly. So, uh, we have a twenty-four hours, you have to have twenty-four hours riding with us, you have to meet, uh, four of six quarterly drills, um, and then there's other, uh, skills and testing things you need to accomplish in that timeframe, but all those things are done on your own schedule, so you don't have to say, hey, you're coming in Tuesday, it's, are you available Tuesday and you should probably come in for that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to give people an idea, right? What, what, what's the expectation? The more important question I think is, what should people be doing to prepare if they wanna do this, like, hey, you know, get your physical fitness together, like, what are the kinda the things that you would recommend to people?
Yeah, uh, physical fitness is great, um, coming in and just talking to us and having a ride-along is probably your best bet to get started, cause then you see what we're doing, we can talk with you over a longer time period, show you what kinda things you would be doing and what would be expected of you. Um, it is a great career, it takes a lot of hard work and, uh, time and so, um, just kinda letting people see that before they kinda go through the process is probably the best bet.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Uh, having, having just described that, it sounds like myself and Councilmember Deloche might be perfect candidates for the cadet program, having gone on ride-alongs recently.
I'm just sending the application, I'll give you a minute.
As much as I would love to, uh, I, I think my physical ability's limited right now because of my knees, but, but, but as excited as I was up until I was about twelve or fourteen, would have loved to have seen a program like that locally where I lived and the fact that we're doing it here. I'm very much a fan of apprenticeships of this model, I think it's fantastic, so whether it's the firefighters or law enforcement, I think it's great that we have something locally now for the youth. Um, otherwise, I might have ended up, uh, an electrician had I been able to follow that route with the ROP programs, but, uh, I'm just wondering what type of outreach you're doing, because, you know, even though we have this, it's just like, how, uh, in your face are you out there right now or how much publicity do you have for this, marketing?
Right now for this program specifically, for the cadet program, it's a little in the background, just because we don't have any upcoming interviews for it, so, like I said, we do about a yearly interview and it's in the spring, so this whole time period is kinda getting those people who we just interviewed in through the process into training and get them established. Uh, around the, uh, winter and beginning of spring of next year, we start sending out, uh, notifications, um, through social media and other, um, events to try and get that word out there to increase our numbers of applicants so we can have a nice pool to, uh, interview through.
Okay, and, and I'm curious, so you said this is for, uh, a minimum age of sixteen up to eighteen, and so if you entered this program at sixteen, you know, once you turn eighteen, you're like good to go as a firefighter one, or is there still some more education that needs to happen before?
Yeah, so for the junior firefighter program, the outreach we're doing right now, we've, uh, opened up applications, since this is the first time of us having, um, a minors, as far as being ride-alongs, we've always had volunteers, but more of it more for minors. Um, we're starting off with a small pool, trying to not overwhelm numbers, we're gonna start with maybe talking with some sports teams and seeing, um, starting kinda there, maybe Boys and Girls Club and some more of those type of, um, Eureka and just trying to start small within Eureka first. Um, what was your other, uh, second part of your question?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't see you walk up to the mic to answer the rest of that. No, I was curious, uh, say you enter this program at sixteen, does that mean by eighteen you're ready to go as a firefighter one, or how does that work?
We want to foster, um, individual, uh, drive. We don't want to be holding someone, so we wanna assist people, but we want, if somebody wants to get hired and that's their goal, is to have all that stuff ready when they're eighteen, we would love to make that happen, but we don't wanna have, we wanna foster in our department that self-starting initiative, so it's, it could be at whatever rate and pace that they wanna go at it.
And I love that response because it sounds very Humboldt, like, we're gonna help you through this. I appreciate it, thank you.
I was just curious, um, as far as, uh, with the junior cadet program, so the sixteen-to-eighteen year olds, uh, what's high school, I'm assuming you guys are talking with like the high schools or like how is that working right now, like, how are you?
Uh, with it being a pilot program and starting off, it's, it's, we haven't even got to the high schools yet as far as starting with Eureka High of, cause, uh, as of right now with a fifty-person department of how many applications we're getting, uh, that could be potential limiting as far as how many kids, so we're just starting to start with a couple because of also that scheduling difference of where kids can be at as far as just starting with a couple, hopefully, and just seeing how that works for our department with, on top of trying to bring on more cadets, that was just, uh, that's a plateful for a lot of us that we'd love to have as far as, I mean, the more of these, uh, between cadets and junior firefighters, that's more training and it improves us and we enjoy it as well.
Okay, thank you. I, well, I'm really excited to see where this is at two, three, four years out, so, thanks.
And Humboldt Bay Fire did reach out to not only their staff but city staff to solicit any interest in the program as well. And Humboldt Bay Fire did reach out to not only their staff, but city staff to solicit any interest in the program as well.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Thank you. I, I understand this isn't going to solve the staffing shortage that we have right now. But again, going into that model of what this looks like two, three, four years from now, especially with homegrown candidates, I think this is a great and alternative track while we build that. So, so thank you for this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your work. Thanks for being here. And it'd be great, you know, once things are rolling or, you know, just to hear a report in the spring, you know, in terms of how it's going and things like that. So thank you. Okay, that brings us to our last item on the agenda, which is council reports and/or city-related travel reports. And I'll start with Councilmember Contrares Deloche.
Okay, so I'm going to be leaving, so I'll start with that first. Thirteenth through the fifteenth, I'm taking Supervisor Royal's place, going down to, I forget the name of it, but it's to learn about offshore wind. So I'll be down in Sacramento doing that. So I'm pretty excited about that. And then I did an all-day ride along with Humboldt Bay Fire. I was with them all day long and just kind of went hither and yon. So I got to be with Logan, Jared, and Chris. And I was really impressed, had a lot of really great conversations. We actually went to other firehouses and stuff. We got out on a couple of calls. And I don't remember what it's called, but the one where everything is on and you're going as fast as you can through town. So that happened. Anyway, I, it was a great experience. I enjoyed it. I felt like it was just, yeah, Mario, if this had been around, I would have been like, heck, yeah, this is great. And then I went to the Rhododendron Parade, got to see everybody. That was really cool. I attended Humboldt COAD, that stands for Community Organizations in Disaster? Thank you. Sorry, think for a second. Also attended Cal Cities, the Redwood Empire Division meeting down in Riedel. I went to that. I didn't go to the subsequent dinner, but I did go to that. Attended part of Mayor Kim's Embracing Humanity Town Hall. I needed to leave a couple hours early, but it was great again, like it has been in the past. And then, and then I also had attended an event that had some of our leaders here from Sheriff's Department, some other place for the National Day of Prayer on May second. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Moulton.
Hello, thank you. I have no travel to report, but I did attend a two-by-two meeting with Eureka City Schools. Saw some very encouraging improvement in their early literature. Seems like every grade is dealing with the, the different kids who missed different chunks of school during, during shelter-in-place. And it's just delight to see all the efforts there paying off and those kids learning to read. More kids towards the end of the year than towards the beginning. We're still waiting to find out the ultimate disposition of the Jacobs Campus. Everyone in the second ward is on pens and needles. And we spent some time talking about how the city and Eureka City Schools can work to share facilities to make sure that things like kids programs and town halls have great places to be. I attended or sort of walked through the Happy Festival, the Humboldt Asian and Pacific Islanders in Solidarity, is that right? Which has gotten huge this year. It was epic. I love our Taiko troupe locally, the lion dancers performing in the hail was just a sight to behold. I'm looking forward to the Forest Moon Festival and Bike Month. Just wanted to point out that there is a bunch of bike-friendly businesses, and you can look those up, that are giving discounts for folks who are going around riding bikes to work or just anywhere at all. If you go into one of those bike-friendly businesses and show your bike helmet, you might get a discount or a free giveaway or something. So just encouraging people to get out, enjoy the beautiful weather, and our very increasingly bikable city.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer.
Thank you. I got to participate, St. Joe's, our hospital had a tour and a lively discussion with Supervisor Royal, Sheriff. And we talked about a lot of things and I learned how valuable hospitals are, you know, obviously, to our community. But, you know, the issues that they face like seismic, you know, renovation. And you think about how important it is, especially in a massive earthquake, like the hospital needs to be, you know, working for our community. And that was really interesting. And then also, we talked a lot about mental health and how that affects the hospital, the ER. It was a really good learning experience about what the hospital means to the community. It means everything. Attended the Redwood Empire Division meeting and in, with our hosts were Riedel. And we, you know, we talked about legislation that affects our cities. We had a great presentation by COAD. What's that stand for again? I forget, but disaster, yeah. Active disasters. And that was fascinating, what, what they've done for our community, especially for, for our neighbors in Riedel. What else did we talk about? Oh, it was just great to hang out with our fellow councilpeople from Fortuna, Riedel, Trinidad. Great time. Had a JPA meeting, an RCEA meeting. I got to attend the Redwood Region Economic Development Corporation, which is, I think, really interesting to hear what's going on across Humboldt County. And currently, just a heads up, the California Conservation Corps in Cooper Gulch doing non-native species removal and making a park look really good. So if you see them out there, thank them for what they're doing. They're, they're a great organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez.
Thank you. Yeah, I understand how important it is for seismic retrofitting. So I hope Providence doesn't need another twenty years to pay for those. I want to thank Councilmember Bauer for being my alternate at the, the redeck committee meeting there. Yeah, I really enjoy those. And then I attended the California League of Cities Leadership Conference. Councilmember Bauer was there as well. That was April, yeah, the week of like April twenty-second. Yeah, that was late April. I remember that. There's a lot happening. And, and so it was great coming back, talked with staff about that, looking at some policies concerning housing, again, just as important as that is. And I had my notes here somewhere and they're gone now. So I will say that, yes, I also attended the two-by-two with Eureka City Schools with Councilmember Moulton. And I think you covered that pretty well. We did talk about some of our infrastructure plans there, especially with HNI, some of the changes. And then they did let us know that they had a more robust and least public discussion about the extension that they're going with the Jacobs property through July. So that's, that's what I have.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and share mine since I didn't share at the beginning. Let's see, well, I just want to send warm wishes to Mayor Bregal. I did, I wouldn't say I could possibly fill in for Mayor Bregal, but she did ask me to do a couple of things in her stead. And so I attended and I was a judge of the Rhododendron Parade. I just want to say I chose the Cub Scout troupe float, which was, they were the same troupe that came to our council chambers recently. But they had a really wonderful float that was kind of logs that they had fastened together with ropes. Anyway, it was great. It was the float I would have wanted to ride on had I chosen one. And the, the city Eureka did have the, the new crab there also, which was very cool. I also attended Take Your Child to Work Day, which was so fun. There is just this great crew of children here in council chambers coming and sitting in all of our chairs. And we kind of reenacted a council meeting in which decisions were made around unicorns in the city of Eureka, flying unicorn, I guess it's Pegasus, I'm not exactly sure. But anyway, there, some sophisticated decision-making around the feeding and care of these unicorns at the city. And it was a lot of fun. And I think they maybe think that we have a lot of fun up here, perhaps. There was no public comment, but, you know, it was a great opportunity. And thanks to all the city staff that brought their children to, to work that day. I also attended the Redwood Empire meeting in Riedel. And thanks to Mayor Garnes and, and the folks there for hosting us. And I attended a Redwood Region Rise meeting in Lolita. And it was really great to have people from throughout the region coming together to talk about economic development opportunities. Let's see, not directly related to city council, but I did go to Sacramento and met with legislators for the Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month. HWMA, a COAD meeting. No, HWMA is tomorrow, sorry. HTA meeting, a COAD meeting, and Eureka Main Street meeting. And Arts Alive, it was truly alive with Chinatown Festival and, you know, and art installation by children from Alice Bernie School and North Coast Open Studios Art Show. We have so many phenomenal creatives in our community. And I also, I did visit with students at Cal Poly Humboldt during the protests. You know, and was kind of there on the, the periphery, talking with students, you know, and, and other community members, you know, and really just listening to their concerns. Trying to, you know, just be a, you know, right? Like, these are our community members. And, you know, I just want to recognize that there are deep and serious struggles happening in our community. And, you know, I think that it's hard to find a place to truly converse about systemic challenges and global, the way, you know, systemic challenges operate on a global level and affect us personally. And I just want to honor that, you know, freedom of speech is, you know, respected in our community at many different levels. You know, I met with Chief Stevens here. And, you know, we were really talking about, we talked about many things, but also, you know, that, the value of freedom of speech. And, you know, I think that, what do I, well, you know, I think some thoughts are too sophisticated perhaps for the level of a city council report at the end of a long meeting. But, you know, I, I do think that, or I just still feel a lot of care for the students at Cal Poly Humboldt that are really struggling and students who have, you know, had their education impacted in many different ways. But who are also learning a lot, you know, through, through this opportunity or through this, not, I mean, opportunity is not the best word, but through this event. And that, you know, I really value all of us as part of a learning community that are really, you know, at, at the level of a city, we constantly engage with systemic challenges, right? You know, and, and we do so in these kind of micro ways, person-to-person. And it's not easy and we don't always have the right ways to do so. But I just want to say that I really value this council as people who are willing to continue to discourse on the matter. And I value the struggles that are taking place in our community. And they're serious and important. And, you know, may we continue to learn and grow together. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.
Mayor Procham, I just wanted, I believe, Councilmember Bauer was going to make an official report of his travel to Sacramento.
You know, I, I thought I did it last time. I was like, oh, it's been, yeah. May's been, or April, May have been super busy. Yeah, I, I also attended Leadership Conference and it was great. It was a, no, it was, I should probably report a little bit on the board meeting. We spoke, debated ad nauseam about a couple of bills around. One was PG&E and a fixed rate AB 1999. And we debated divestment in, or having the opportunity for cities to have another way to invest in Calpers that isn't, doesn't have fossil fuel as a component. So not divestment, but another option, which was debated extensively, you know, and discussed and voted on. So things that we might want to bring back to a future council meeting. So be, stay tuned for that.
How did those votes go? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for that official report. And thank you, Assistant City Manager Powell, for, for bringing that to light. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. See you soon.